Morning, everyone. Since it's now 10:33, 10:34, we're running a few minutes behind here, but we should begin this public hearing. My name is Tina Morita. I am with Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation, HHFDC. Thank you very much for coming. We all welcome you to this meeting today. I am today's hearing officer. Hearing Officer. For those in the room, please silence your cell phones. Make sure they are silent out of respect for everyone providing testimony today during the meeting. Notice that the public hearing was published statewide on September 10th, 2023. The notice of public hearing was also posted on the HHFDC website. This meeting is being recorded and statements will be transcribed. In order that this hearing may accomplish its purpose as efficiently as possible, we ask for your cooperation in following these guidelines. First, when you are recognized, for those in the room, please sit in this chair at the end of the table here. For those on the phone as well, please clearly state your name and whether you are speaking for yourself or as a representative of an agency or organization. Next, please make your statements as brief and concise as possible to give everyone an opportunity to state his or her views. Comments should be relevant to the purpose of the meeting and should not be of a personal nature. Please avoid repetitive comments as well. HHFDC will not be addressing questions posed during testimonials. Unruly behavior such as booing, hissing, or harassing remarks is prohibited. Please submit all written testimonies to me at the end of the meeting. And we will now start accepting testimony, starting with those who are physically present in the meeting room. So we will begin with Ms. Oshiro, followed by Mr. Mohana.
I'm Minakami and board members, I'm Sandy Oshiro. Thank you for the chance to comment on the proposed changes to the QAP. I'll keep my comments brief, but I believe you have my full remarks. I coordinate a family support group for young adults on the autism spectrum. Full disclosure, I also serve on the board of the nonprofit Pacific Housing Assistance Corporation, although these remarks are mine alone. Serving vulnerable populations are learning that the QAP is a significant document. It sets the state's policy on affordable housing by allocating points to for-profit and nonprofit developers seeking tax credits for their projects. Given the importance of the QAP and our longstanding need for affordable housing, I would like to raise my concerns about two categories of proposed changes. Post criteria 14, special needs housing. This amendment reduces the maximum points granted to projects proposing housing for persons with special needs from two points to one point. Why HHFDC seeks to reduce support for special needs housing is confounding as it would hurt the low-income populations that the tax credits aim to serve. Housing tax credits are critical for permanent supportive housing. Evidence shows supportive housing can keep individuals off the streets, including those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Hawaii has virtually no QAP preference for special needs populations, as the Weinberg Foundation recently highlighted. Now, HHFDC proposes to cut those points by half when it should be increasing its support. Further discourage special needs housing, HHFDC wants to require an additional market study for special needs. This in addition to the market study required for low-income individuals. Why would HHFDC want to disadvantage nonprofits proposing special needs housing by increasing their costs? Propose criteria 16, qualified nonprofit corporations. Another draft amendment would reduce the maximum points granted to qualified nonprofit organizations from three to two points. Again, as it is HHFDC's desire to penalize nonprofits that have a mission to serve those most in need of affordable housing. Although increasing these points would show the agency's public service intent, at the minimum, please keep this at three points. An analysis by the Corporation for Supportive Housing shows Hawaii did poorly against other states that have litech set-asides for supportive housing requirements to serve vulnerable individuals and families and other provisions that help people most in need. Please then continue the policies that have turned Kakaako into a dense community, largely for those who can't afford high-priced apartments. HHFDC's policy should be inclusive and serve low-income families, seniors, and local people who desperately need help to avoid homelessness. Thank you for your time and consideration.
We'll continue with and Mr. Cario.
Good morning, Mo Mohana. Hi, Rich Costa. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments and testimony. We did submit a comprehensive memo to HHFDC with the concerns or comments that we have. We're going to focus on a few main ones and leave the rest of the actual written submitted testimony, just out of respect to time. Change to minimum threshold project readiness, section 3, B3, seems to give HHFDC discretion to ask additional unknown discretionary approvals or other approvals. The cost of funds and the time required in order to meet the current threshold requirement of readiness at 201H is quite significant, both in time and capital. And therefore, it is important to be very clear what those readiness terms are. And there should be no discretion or ambiguity in what they are so that we can target them. And we know that when we submit a successful, complete application that meets all the minimum threshold requirements that is evaluated, and there is no subjectivity beyond such items so that we can complete our tasks and know that money spent and invested is done so correctly. This one follows similarly to criterion four, point scoring changes for readiness. Again, we don't believe any readiness measure should be subjective and it should be fact-based. It should be a very clear outline of what those readiness are. And as long as those readiness items are met, then the application should be considered in a level playing field. The bigger item is the developer fee cap. And I will do my best to explain the difference in the developer fee cap on a bond 4% transaction versus a 9% transaction that has a limitation. The 9% credits, the credits are limited, and the bond transaction on the 4%, the 4% credits are not limited. So therefore, there's a significantly different dynamic. The actual size of the developer fee increases the amount of federal tax credits and state tax credits that are received and therefore reducing the ask on the RHRF. It actually enhances the financial performance of a project as in takeaway from the financial performance. Currently, the QAP encourages scoring for those that reduce their developer fee to certain amount and improve the score. The scoring drives most of developer fees that we've been asking for in the last few years and projects we've done to be about 5% to 7% of the total development cost. 5% to 7% is a typical construction contingency. So most projects are at a 5% to 10% contingency, most of the five. And the developer fee is actually treated as a second contingency by lenders and investors as well as developers. There are no additional resources to address any cost overruns except deferral of developer fee. As a matter of fact, in addition to reducing it, encouraging developers to reduce their current developer fee to an amount equivalent or very close to the actual construction contingency, HHFDC itself views this developer fee as a contingency because it limits the amount of cash that a developer can get to about $1 million until the project is put into perm. To put that in perspective, it's two to three years to be ready to submit an application. It's about a year to know you have an allocation. It's another year in order, at best, and that we're at the mercy of various counties processing building permits to get a building permit. Then 18 months plus on a large project to finish construction, then about a year to finish lease-up. Then we convert to perm. So six-plus years before a developer has paid their fee. And the developer has to take construction completion risk, mechanic lien-free completion risk, permanent loan shortfall completion risk, lease-up risk, all these risks, and all of them go against that fee. So additionally, reduction of that fee is going to incentivize developer to have smaller projects. There is no need to take additional risk when the fee is limited. In many states that we've worked with, we size at times the development to be at where the developer fee is capped. Reducing the number of units is very cost inefficient. Operationally, as well as construction, cost of issuance of bonds, many costs, development costs that are fixed, make the project more expensive. Many operating expenses are fixed, affect the NOI because of the reduced number. And with that, all we're going to see is smaller project, less efficient projects, more applications for HHFDC to process, and overall reduction in number of units of production. So it's a very negative aspect. Last but not least, many of these developments are in partnership, whether with local nonprofits or other partnerships or other agencies. So this fee that is being looked at is not necessarily a fee that's going exclusively to the particular developer, but it partners within development, sometimes two, sometimes more. So that also needs to be taken into consideration. Let's see. Additional points leveraging and reasonableness of development costs. In the reasonableness of development costs, HHFDC, a couple of years ago, introduced third-party cost breakdown from qualified general contractors or other to test the reasonableness. Further pushing this criteria, we are concerned will push developers to try to reduce their actual cost, which we know is a challenge in today's environment. So we caution, we believe the current system, the current points are sufficient. Any additional points, we believe, are pushing developers to reduce costs, to make it more competitive, and hence not necessarily having the correct budgets. The correct budgets are already provided by third parties that we have there. Negative points, the inclusion of negative points is of significant concern. We understand that HHFDC should have the right to reduce, to apply negative points. But the reasons and the criteria why negative points must be clearly spelled out, it can't be, you get negative points because compliance certificate is not there and you're out of business now for 12 months. You've invested millions of dollars in one or more projects and cannot do business for that period of time. One, they need to be clearly laid out, and two, they really need to be substantial to stop a developer from having to proceed with doing business and developing affordable housing that is quite needed. Reduction in points for qualified census tracts. I don't even understand why there is a reduction in points at all. It's already difficult to develop in a non-QCTDDA because you don't get the 30% bump, which bumps your federal credits, hence your state credits, immediately making you ask for a higher gap, which makes you less competitive. The fact that we're even asking for, you know, a change in those points, that entire category, you're already at a disadvantage for being in a non-QCTDDA. I have many other comments, but we submitted those in writing. Thank you for your time and available. I know there's no questions, but available in case there are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Snap for car with Snap for car development. I'd like to commend Mr. Mohana's testimony that was very comprehensive and detailed with respect to the merits of his testimony and the challenges that we have. I stand on our written testimony submitted yesterday, but wanted to emphasize so that everyone listening in consideration of these amendments to the QAP, be aware that when we submit an application annually to HHFDC through the QAP process, that we have already spent two to three years, in many cases, processing the entitlements through a 201H necessary to increase the feasibility of the project. And then we will have spent, you know, aside from the two to three years of administrative overhead, spend between $2 to $3 million or more in working capital to third-party consultants to prepare all of the necessary studies, architectural, engineering, public hearings, legal fees in order to submit and poison a project for development for HFTC's consideration through the QAP. I believe that the scoring system already provides the checks and balances with respect to the limited amount of developers' fees as the scoring is based on the percentage of fees charged related to the overall development cost. Additionally, the board needs to, the committee needs to understand that the bond underwriters that oversee and underwrite the project's feasibility, look at the sources of funds. And the developer fee, as Mr. Mohana stated, is another source, capital source, as a contingency in the event there are budget busts. When you start dealing with a project that's $100 to $150 million and limiting a developer fee to $3,750,000, you are disincentivizing any developer from taking any risks, and it will result in the unintended consequences of more smaller projects that are scaled back in line with the development fee cap. Furthermore, we are required to have minimal liquidities as well as networks in our financing with certain guarantees that are annually reviewed for much of the financing that we do. So it's a matter of risk reward. Today, you can buy in your treasuries for 4.8%. So think about when we're charging 5% to 7%, pretty consistent with Mohana's testimony, Mr. Mohana's testimony. It's a very reasonable fee, consideration that we will be in a project from start, inception to completion, five to six years. So again, I really would like to emphasize reconsideration of capping the development fees. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm McCutney Maviva with the Ahi Group. I am going to stand on our submitted testimony, which will be emailed in. I would just like to say that I agree with the two testifiers prior to me. And I don't agree with them because we are looking for higher developer fees. I agree with them because between the two of them, they probably have 50 years in the affordable housing space. It is absolutely imperative that we bring up today, and our testimony will reflect many items, but the biggest issue that we see is the reduction in developer fee. The unintended consequence of this will go contrary to the goals of the state of Hawaii. I think it's very clear in the Qualified Allocation Plan, at the very top of the Qualified Allocation Plan, that our goals are to increase and sustain the supply of affordable rental units. Increase and sustain those. Every decision that you make with regard to modification of the Qualified Allocation Plan needs to address. Are we delivering more housing and faster? If the answer to, why did you change this particular criteria? Is no, this will not aid in our two goals, more housing and faster, then you should not be making the change. All changes to the Qualified Allocation Plan need to support the goals of the state and our housing needs. So reduction in the developer fee for all of the reasons stated by the testifiers before me will absolutely reduce the amount of housing produced, period. The other important component which we support but needs to be recognized in the context of the developer fee is project readiness. Project readiness is now a threshold item. In fact, you have to have your 201H, you have to have all of the discretionary approvals. So that is millions of dollars and two, three years worth of time in order to achieve the project readiness, which is a threshold. I do question the repeat of project readiness further in the Qualified Allocation Plan, which is criterion number four. And I ask that readiness to proceed with the development of the project, if their line items are A, B, and C, that we ask for more specifics in those areas. For example, B is discretionary approvals, you can get up to four points. And those examples that they've listed in the Qualified Allocation Plan are zoning and 201H, notwithstanding the fact that previously they're threshold items. So it's a threshold, but then you're scored on it. Why? That doesn't work well. The other thing I would like to point out is the modification of the scoring on the state and local government participation. I'm not sure of the goal, and I would ask that future modifications to the Qualified Allocation Plan, again, identify what goal you're reaching, you're trying to achieve by making this change. So in the goal that increases the points for the state and government, state and local government support, is that because you're just trying to prioritize projects that are on state and county lands? A project that's being built on a state and county land is great. It already receives the benefits of below-market leases. And that taking land costs out of the overall development is a really important part of the development. But that does not outweigh the benefits of smaller projects, infield projects, and projects which maybe already have the infrastructure or already have zoning and that can happen faster. What has repeatedly happened is awards of projects to big state, awards of resources, bonds, rental housing revolving funds, to big state projects or county projects which are years out. And they come in for extension after extension after extension. You need to be awarding resources based upon readiness. And readiness achieves the goals of the most housing the fastest possible. The most housing as fast as possible, that is what we need to achieve. And we need to reinforce any and all changes to the Qualified Allocation Plan, which support those two goals.
Ms. And then Mr. Watase will be following.
My name is Samara Dow. I am here as I oppose 16. I sent in written testimony, so I'm going to stand on that written testimony. But also just wanted to bring in a humanistic viewpoint with these amendments and just in the general operations, I think, in general. Because we hear all the numbers and the processes and all of that. But I think we should remember that we're talking about the effects that these things will have on people's lives. And we should be accordingly where people are able to live dignified lives, that they are able to afford their homes. And obviously, right now, people who make less than 30% AMI are most people in Hawaii. So I think when we're looking at the elements that are happening currently, they're mainly for people who make 100% AMI or more. And obviously, that's not the most of the population. So I'm hoping that we can find ways to not only make developments that make sense and are sensitive to cultural aspects as well, like looking at if there's EV or burials or, you know, who are on their Kulaana lands and things like that. But there's things that make sense for people who are actually working here, living here, paying taxes, and are in it for making money off of housing, but actually are living in it and need these homes in order to have fulfilling lives. I mean, I've been houseless off and on since I was 14. So this problem has not been addressed, obviously. We have a growing problem with housing. And it's only through having Nakamali families that I'm even able to sit here today with a level head and not be addicted to anything running on the streets. So I just hope that people can remember that these aren't just numbers, these aren't just developments. They're for people, human beings who deserve to have a quality, a high quality of living, high quality of life. And it starts by having a stable place to live. If you don't have that, you cannot build and make yourself a better person or help build a better community, right? Because unless you're okay and your family's okay, you cannot help the community in general. So I just hope that people can remember that. Even though we may not know somebody who is houseless or it's going to be or could be, there are only a few people away from actually knowing somebody who does. And most people are actually a paycheck away or emergency away from being houseless also. And we've been doing work on Hawaii and there's nobody to take vouchers there. You know, the section eight or any kind of vouchers, housing assistance. And so just rules in general, I think, for the state and county to be revised to look at the situation, the real situation of people and their livelihood. What we can do better, working together too with city and state, you know, and other private people that can help. Because we're in a crisis, a really huge crisis for years now, decades. Like I said, I've been dealing with this since I was 14. So I just wanted to bring that human perspective into this conversation. And you and I might written testimony. Thank you.
And Mr. Watase.
It's great what this young lady just said, you know, because it reminds us, what we're trying to do, right? Is to help our friends, families, and neighbors in Hawaii. And, you know, Mark Development submitted written testimony. Oh, by the way, my Koa project will accept vouchers. We even have openings for three bedrooms. Okay, so look on my website, mdaway.com. That's for everybody. You know, I'm not going to recurge to everything that Stanford and McCutney said, but I agree with that. And I do want to reiterate, you know, that the developer fees, you know, there was a, I've been around long enough that I remember when the program was not oversubscribed, you know, and we didn't know how to use bonds. And the agency has brought, worked really hard to make it so that developers want to and are participating and working towards this goal of providing more affordable housing. But many of these things that are being proposed are working against that. You know, the freezing, the developer fees, you know, that's been for over 10 years now. You know, the present value of that money, if you adjusted for inflation, you should be, the cap, if you want to just keep it at par, should be over closer to $5 million. Right? But it's not. So we've actually been going backwards and the incentives, you know, the previous testifier was talking about, you know, and find stuff, well, excuse me, and developers likewise would be, will be looking at the alternatives. Gee, am I going to spend my staff time and resources and all the salaries that I have to pay? You know, I can go develop regular property. Or do I really want to stay in this affordable housing business? Just because you're oversubscribed doesn't mean that there's not alternatives and you could lose this whole thing. You could lose the whole workforce that creates this housing. Because we do, there's a, there's a state senator that submitted testimony that was highly inaccurate, you know, claiming that there's windfall profits, guaranteed profits, no risk. You know, clearly uninformed and misinformed at that. And I actually had a talk with that person, and I do not think that they submitted testimony correcting their information. But we need to set that record straight. The, that kind of testimony is inaccurate. Developers have tremendous risk. Developers have lost lots of money doing this. You know, so no good deed goes unpunished, we say in our industry. That cannot be driving the QAP. Furthermore, for me, you know, one of my things that bugs me with the QAP is that there's not enough weights and attention to social services because that comes out of the operating budget, not the development budget, right? And we can't afford that, but so many of these projects need a staff in the operating budget for social services. When you go to my senior projects, it's, it's a circus, you know, with the people that, and more so now, we're taking a lot of, you know, housing-first people that have vouchers, so great they can pay, but the way that they behave and stuff, you know, they need social services. And I think charities and some of the other groups do a really good job with that, but not, you know, it falls on our property managers also. So, you know, you can't, cannot So, you know, you can't, cannot keep saying cost is the most important thing and then expect us to operate the project and maintain it. Well, when your tenants have all kinds of mental and physical disorders and things that I, we had just had a tenant that died in their apartment and had all kinds of different bodily fluids all over the place. It's a ten thousand dollar rehab. It's a hazmat rehab. You send guys in there with white suits. I think these are the kinds of things that are in the operating expenses when you're dealing with a clientele tenants that have different issues and we need to help them. But the QAP does not take that into consideration, right? The thing, they always look at development costs, not the operating cost. So we want to, and then my last thing that I think the QAP needs to take into consideration more. Right now, everything is evaluated on cost per unit. It doesn't, it gives a little consideration to single family homes, but, you know, you're not really evaluating the number of people we're serving. You're evaluating the number of units, the cost per unit. Doesn't distinguish between a studio versus a three bedroom unit. A three bedroom unit servicing maybe five, six, seven people versus a studio servicing one people. One person. Okay, so I think that to be recognized in the math, that so much of it has been quantitatively done now. So other than that, I stand by their testimony and our written testimony. Thank you.
Darma Gibson.
Oh, thank you for taking public testimony on this. In regards to developer fees, I think that it is a determination of risk. And one, perhaps for a future year and not in this particular QAP, but it probably would be a good method to use some of the funding available to reduce risk in terms of taking on the environmental assessments, in terms of, this is already done sometimes, providing county or state lands. And to the degree that you can reduce risk, then I think you can expect lower fees. And probably some of that is already happening, right? There are places with lower risk for developers that have fees of maybe four and five percent is the standard. But of course, that's when you've reduced and you've done the environmental work, the market studies, all those sort of things upfront, right? And that could be cost savings for both sides, really. Cost savings for, on the developer side and cost savings on the public side as well. So I would put that forward as a strategy for future. But I also just wanted to testify more pointedly on the proposed changes to criteria fourteen and criteria sixteen. A criteria fourteen is about special needs housing. I would say that amongst our houses population, a significant portion has some form of disability. And there are thousands of disabled folks across the state that are currently houseless. I don't think there's any need to do a market study on that or a disability study. I would strongly encourage HFTC to leave the point allocation, if not increase it. But the proposal to decrease the number of points for supportive housing really doesn't align with the current need. And I, we might have a couple other people to testify on that, but there are thousands of disabled folks on our streets right now. Then criteria sixteen, qualified nonprofit corporations. I'm not, I also would disagree with reducing the number of points in that category. I think if anything, it should also be increased, but certainly not reduced. We need a range of developers to be competing for these funds. And I think it's healthy and necessary to have some nonprofit developers out there competing and being given some extra scoring for the fact that they cannot get funds in the same way that a for-profit developer can, right? There's just some limitations imposed by being a nonprofit, and I think that should be recognized and not punished. So those are the two things I wanted to bring to light, the special needs scoring and also the scoring on nonprofit developers. Thank you.
Is the last of our in-meeting testimonials. So we will now switch over to those who have called in, who will be providing testimony today. We will be recognizing you by phone numbers since we cannot see your names on our call-in list. When you hear your phone number called, we will unmute your mic and if you could start your testimony. So the person who has the phone number two zero nine, you'll be providing testimony next. Sorry, one moment, please. We're having some technical difficulties. My apologies, everyone. We are getting tech support to help with this. Okay, so if there's some your mic should now be on and you can provide testimony.
Hi, this is Keith Larry. I would not provide testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next we'll be calling upon number two.
Five numbers in the nose.
If you could unmute your, your phone or your microphone. Then the next three callers coming up. The three of you are next in line in that order. If there's someone at number two five, make sure it's unmuted. Sorry, we're not receiving any testimony, so we're going to go to the next number. Three. You can make sure your microphone is unmuted and you can begin your testimony. Sorry. We're having some difficulties. Hold on one moment, please.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello.
Hello, this is Doug Dick.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Bigley.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, I, I was, I was. Excuse me?
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
The way I
The way I got in, correct.
So people are just, people are just, um, need. Probably not enough. Should I testify? Can I go now or no?
Coming through, Mr. Bigley. Yes, please go ahead and testify. We are still working on the other microphones to bring them back online.
Okay.
Okay.
Describe. The, the program. The low income
The lowest we have in tax credit program is simply, to simply help the working poor. And in the context of what we're working for, as Mr. Watase said.
You know, we come across a lot of social services and special needs.
We need to, we need to.
A grant.
Grants.
You have homelessness, veterans, autism, the elderly, kids aging out of foster care. People who have been in need of card space. And the nation of Hawaii, it's an issue. I know there's a lot of concern or it seems that what's happened to the point here is that we're starting to kind of force rank. Which one is the soul, who deserves more? And I think that seems to be something. Uh, and I think that trying to get back to what the program was designed for is important. Because again, uh, we, I, 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 a grant I saw you were on, but I don't have a computer on.
I only have my phone.
But I can try to. Let me close this off here. Give me one second.
This is, this is a grant.
Is the C-CAT autism. So let me try to clear, clear. My point is that giving priority to these other factors, whether you do it by pointing that people have land. Isn't helping. What it's doing is it's skewing a wave from in some instances. The core purpose of this program, this program was designed for the working poor. And by helping the working poor, you are preventing homelessness. You are putting people in a home, actively wrapped around services. And all those types of things. The minute you start scoring for other reasons, what ended up happening, the program no longer serves a continuous continuum, but specifically addresses something like homelessness, for example. If you just focus on homelessness, you could, you could, you could, a hundred percent, low income, high credit, homelessness, a hundred percent. Uh, the nation of Hawaii, a hundred percent, and you still would not fill that need. So how do you force rank? Which is more important? The beauty of the program was designed essentially to work for, which cuts across all of those things. Now about readiness, readiness. Readiness costs have absolutely skyrocketed. And I'm just, so the previous testimony, that what's happened is the likelihood of an application is declining and the cost of execution is rising. So what's going to happen if you calculate the sum total of all of the applications that are actually denied? You will have millions of dollars that have deployed on the project that was not given. So I think whatever you put a ready to them, I would like the number. So you would say, I'm going to deploy the readiness, you're going to have work in drawing if you're building, whatever it is. That's five hundred thousand dollars. You're going to have to do a H two one H calculation. That's going to be five hundred thousand dollars. So that's agency and begins to draw connections between what their path is and what class is. Because when you can't see those together, it's very difficult.
What the, what the, I don't know what the act is.
The final from all the testimony that came before, and I've been doing a four year, all across the country. And I was you have on that, some of the most capable, competent development tools that I've ever. And as a result, what's going to happen if there's a disconnect now between C's and R's? And everybody in that group is taking things. Affordable housing is a lot of ways far more risky. Than some types of housing. It goes back.
Back.
Before. You say. Well, I don't say market risk, but you have clients.
Clients, rent.
You have.
You have entitlements.
You have all these.
That you have.
Deal with.
Deal with.
There's a lot of resources. Uh. Affordable housing.
And I've read.
Some of the.
Some of the.
Company. And there's a tremendous disconnect. Because it's easy simply to say. We want the same output. We just want to pay less.
For.
And then the lit.
And the lit.
That. That you say, well, there's still.
There's still.
A lot of.
Flurry flying.
But there's no.
No.
Politician.
We.
What happens in cities in California. Is that you have a degradation. Of the quality of developer and the quality of development. Because what you've done.
Done.
You've begun to encourage. The less qualified. The less qualified.
Qualifying.
That getting you work. The worst thing in the world. Is there's a lot of people that come. And they are.
Are box.
Box. And whatever you ask them to do. They'll check the box. And the example I'm going to give. By point.
Point.
In some public housing projects.
Public.
Big public housing project. People develop a lot of.
Free.
Bedroom.
Every word.
That. And you have a lot of people. In those.
In those.
And even though. Somebody started with.
Good idea.
Would you do a.
Would you work on one back?
If you put that on.
That on an application.
Somebody would check that box. And somebody would deliver you that. So what.
So what.
Without.
See.
Focus on the quality of developer. And the quality of the project. Over time. The process is just ruining the process. And what I see here. Is what you're starting to do again.
I'm. I'm. This.
Between.
Between.
And.
And.
And quality. And we've seen how that ends up. We've built. The US built a lot of stuff in.
Public housing years.
With that same mentality. So we have.
Their data point.
To know what's happening.
And you have that too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And.
And.
Thank you. Uh, for those who have called in to provide testimony. Uh, if I could please ask you to press star six. I believe that should help with activating your microphones when you're called for testimony.
Thank you.
Hello. This is Mary Lynn Curtis. On behalf. On behalf of the Denver coordinator on homelessness. I stand. I stand on being written with the body and if you have any questions, I can never get back here. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. Um. A caller at. And then after that, we'll be recognizing callers. Hello. I'm sorry, we can't hear anything if you're speaking right now. Could you please double check your microphone? I'm sorry, we're going to be moving on to the next caller. Dave. That caller could turn on their microphone, please.
Aloha.
Aloha.
This is.
This is.
This is.
Courtney.
Courtney.
How do you?
Aloha.
Thank you for the opportunity. That's. I would like to.
Like to echo.
Given previous.
Previously.
Our.
Our.
Connie Mava. And Craig Wataki. In particular.
I'd like to speak about.
Readyness. And the initial cost involved in that. Time. Particularly for. Non profit.
Develop.
That is.
It is.
As was mentioned.
The cost.
The cost.
That's.
For non profit.
And.
Limits. Limits.
New.
Non profit.
Problems.
Besting.
This.
For competing.
Peed.
I'd also like to.
Like to.
Comment on social service. They are absolutely. All of our.
Our.
Tech.
Right.
Specific type of.
Problem.
I'd also like to comment.
Comment that.
As developers, we should be able to estimate.
Our. Our risk.
In.
In.
In other words, we should be able to.
Be able to score.
Self score.
Score.
And estimate. Whether we're competitive.
Competitive.
Or. Before we spend.
Hundred.
Dollars.
Dollars.
Project.
Project.
That concludes my remarks.
My remarks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to caller at. And that person will be followed by. Carol. Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Hi.
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 Um. I am actually.
Actually not providing testimony today. But I did want to mention that there's a really bad echo.
On the phone.
On the phone.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's from us. Uh, sorry, caller at eight oh eight. Is there anyone at five? Seven. Okay, we'll be moving on to caller at eight oh eight.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Uh. My name is.
My name is.
Con.
Con.
Google. I'm with Avalon Development.
Development.
Company. Um, and, uh, I'm here to follow up with, uh, our follow up on our written testimony. Um, I know that the previous speakers, um, had brought up a number of our points previously, but I'll touch upon those along with some other points here that we'd like to be considered. Uh, number one is, we feel that, you know, the, there is a particular emphasis placed on government owned land. And, and we feel that does constrict what is possible for affordable housing projects in the state of Hawaii. Uh, our view is that, um, you know, the state doesn't have land necessarily in the best possible locations, which provide equity of access to tenants to certain key services provided to them. Say, for example, medical care or grocery store, right? So our view is, is that, uh, that government owned land receiving some form of emphasis or benefit in the scoring. Um, I, I think that construres the possibility for projects. Uh, the second point that I wanted to make here was the developer fee. Like, this has been spoken about consistently today, and we agree with, with what's been talked about. Um, and, and again, you know, one of the key points we want to, uh, make is that if there is a cap in place, what you're going to see is a flurry of smaller projects. And so, you know, the, the given thing here is what we're looking for is maximizing the number of units that can be delivered in a given year. And by capping off that fee, you're, you're, you're going to severely restrict what is being proposed, um, in, in the applications. Um, and then, uh, one other thing also is regarding discretionary approvals regarding the, uh, regarding zoning. Um, and we feel that that's a little bit ambiguous, especially since if we, whatever we provide for information doesn't meet the, the necessary required requirement of the application. Then we'd be risking the six or 12 month lockout period, uh, for possibly applying again for, for tax credits. Um, and then being that, we're also opposed to increasing that lockout period from six to 12 months. As it would discourage, uh, a larger pool of potential new developers who want to enter the affordable sphere. Um, let's see here. And then, um. Uh. Okay, and then another thing also here is in criterion seven, um, it gives you less points, uh, for projects that require some form of rental assistance vouchers. And we feel that that shouldn't be the case, uh, that, uh, that is essentially kind of diversifying what is possible. So we're against that as well. Um, and also, um, one other thing, and this is something that I, I found a little difficult to work with in my last application round. Is that we have a mixed use project which has a non residential use. And trying to put that into the application, so you can understand the structure of allocated costs, is very difficult because the application itself is locked. And I was hoping that there would be some degree of flexibility in the application to allow us to, you know, say, you know, uh, propose a mixed use project. And, and essentially that, that wraps up all my comments.
If we could have our next caller. Six nine. Eight zero eight. Hi, is there anyone at eight zero eight? Okay, we'll be moving on to caller at. Five zero. Hello, anyone? Okay, we're moving on. Um, our next number is showing up as eight zero eight. Zero. No. Okay, our next caller at eight zero. Could turn on your mic, please, to provide testimony. Okay. Uh, that is our. Oh, hello. Hello. Hi. Yes, hi.
Oh, hi. Um, I did want to provide some testimony.
Hey, could we get your name?
I just wanted.
Uh, sorry, could we get your name for the record?
Yes. My name is Kino.
Kino. Sorry, could you repeat that? Um, you were fading in and out.
My name is Kino. Shige Kon.
Thank you.
And I live on the island of Hawaii. So I do, um, a lot of.
A lot of.
With the homeless. And basically, I.
Shocked.
Urge HSEC to not. Profit developers. But to.
To.
Increase the. Three to four points. Developers do not take money where the primary purpose is to earn a profit or return for their investors. Instead, they're motivated and driven by their mission to provide affordable housing. Part of the problem with our current housing market is that too much of our housing is mostly about making a profit and not about providing housing for our people. And we need more developers who do not take funding from private investors, but instead are focused on how to best fulfill their mission of affordable housing for our people. Um. I. If anything, we should be increasing the number of points for people with special needs, not decreasing it. Um, I personally work with dozens of homeless people with special needs, and I know that there are hundreds more that we haven't even reached yet. So, um, I think it's very, very important for us to make sure that these services are being provided for them. And a lot of them are not able to speak for themselves. A lot of them, you know, they don't even have phones. They can't call in. They can't get to, you know, a neighbor island to, to testify or anything like that. But.
But.
I think that's pretty much all I need.
All I need, I should say.
Thank you so much, Kino. We appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, that concludes all of our call in testimonials. If there's anyone else in the room, just to provide oral testimony at this time. We thank you for all of those who have attended today's public hearing, and we are now adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.